So we're doing these hearings online, which is a bit of a sad state of affairs because we'd much rather be in the room with all the people who's submitting and having our talk. So I'd like to ask the councillor who's on the list for doing the karakia this morning to open us with a karakia, please.
Kia ora Jenny, I don't mind doing it.
Lovely, great. Thank you very much.
Ait kia ora tato, ka hoki mai, ki te ne hui, oto tato kore roero te mahere atau, o te kōneretaio ki waitaha nei te mēhi, ki na kai mai, ki na kai kōnera. Ki na memo te hapo re, e hara mai ki te, ki to tato wero, ki to tato o to koutou, moe maiā, o to tato mahi o te kōnera nei, te na koutou. Ai he karakia timatango tato nei rā, tato nei hui. Pakataka te hau ki te ulu, pakataka te hau ki te tonga, ki amā kine kine ki uta, ki amā tara tara ki tai, e hiaki ana te atakura, e teo, e hoka, e hauhū, a tīhai maori ora. Kia ora Jenny.
Thank you councillor Pauling. Now, we haven't got anybody apologising today. Oh, yes, sorry about that. We do evet tumutai out, evet councillor Lewis as an apology until about 11:30 this morning. Conflicts of interest? We do not have any conflicts of interest that anybody's advised me about. And if we do come up to one through the hearings, councillors will notify us then. So we're turning on now, we're on page five of the agenda. We're just going to start the submissions. And the first person I've got online, Christina, is Nikki the first person?
The first person's Anna, but she hasn't arrived yet. So Nikki is next.
All right. Okay. So welcome Nikki. I think you probably know what the process is, but thank you very much for your written submission. You can take it that we've all read that. So we allocate 10 minutes to you now. We think it's probably a good idea if you do about five or six minutes to speak and then we've got some time for some questions. So thank you for coming in and over to you. Everybody, you'll find Nikki's written submission on page seven of the agenda. So over to you Nikki.
Thank you Jenny. Kia ora everybody. I'll try to get through this without losing my voice. So thanks and lovely to see you all this morning. I'm going to speak to, I was Nikki from Forest and Bird here for anyone that doesn't know who I am. I'm the Regional Conservation Manager for Canterbury in the West Coast, based in Christchurch. I want to speak to two points in my submission today. And one is the proposed climate levy and the other one is on the biosecurity and biodiversity portfolio. First of all, to the proposed climate levy, it's really timely to be talking about this today, given the government's climate adaptation plan consultation that came out yesterday that recognises the need for regional and local solutions. And it also has a really strong focus on nature-based solutions, which is really great to see. So that's kind of like the basis of my submission today and my written submission as well. The government's consultation seems to recognise that if we look after nature, it will look after us in the long term. So that's really good to see. Forest and Bird supports ECAN's proposed climate levy. And we think that it could be both a targeted or a general rate, depending on who would benefit most from it. And we also think that you could be innovative and could collect levy off people who, you know, like big users of synthetic fertiliser, solidable fertiliser, that sort of thing. There's an opportunity to explore some sort of innovation there. We definitely support a general rate on the condition that it be provide both, that it be used for nature-based solutions that provide both climate and biodiversity benefits sort of more generally. And that includes things for things like restoring and expanding wetlands and for creating room for the rivers. There's this wonderful narrative going on at the moment about making room for the rivers and reinstating floodplains and things like that where, you know, if you slow the water down and give it room to move, it does far less damage when the big floods come. And also for restoring and improving other native ecosystems that provide all kinds of benefits for nature and for people as well. So in summary, on that point, we support your proposed climate levy. We really look forward to talking more with you about how that would work out. And particularly where it supports nature-based solutions to create resilience in case of climate change. So that segues quite nicely into my next point, which is about biodiversity and biosecurity. It's really excellent to see these portfolios joined up or integrated. They go hand in hand. What we would really love to see now is an action plan on how this is actually implemented and practised on the ground. And, you know, that would be things like collaboration across government agencies and coordination of existing programmes. And also something that is inclusive of all the voices in this space, all the communities of interest in this particular space of biodiversity and biosecurity. This kind of action plan would align with the goals in Timana Oteataio, the government's national New Zealand biodiversity strategy. There's been an implementation plan just out on that as well. And I know there's also some really good stuff already happening within ECAN, but especially on the biodiversity front. But it would be really good to see sort of like the linkage between biodiversity and biosecurity strengthened. Unfortunately, I mean, why I say this is unfortunately, I still get lots of reports from people out there where biodiversity has been destroyed as collateral damage to, from spraying to comply with the pest management plan. So it would be great to see an action plan that sort of sets out how we might work with contractors or farmers to comply with the pest management plan, but not destroy biodiversity in the process. That sort of demonstrates there might be need for some education or an accreditation type system for contractors out there that do spraying for pest control in areas that have high biodiversity values. I've also had, you know, several reports recently where there's been conversations happening and significant interest groups have been left out of the conversation. And that's particularly in relation to wild animal control. We had spoken to the council a couple of times about forest collapse and the need for increased browser control, especially with regards to increasing the carbon sinking ability of our native ecosystems. So it would be great if we had those conversations on how we might tackle that in future to include all the voices and not just some of the voices. Yeah, we've also talked about wallaby control with you guys recently as well and increasing the funding for wallaby control in the containment area. There's lots of great work happening outside the containment area. So more inside the containment would be great. And recently at one of the biodiversity advisory groups, I raised the issue of weed control in native ecosystems and the sort of like a clear pathway for funding these kinds of projects to, so get ahead of the eight ball so that we don't have these invasive outbreaks of weeds that we can't get on top of as climate change kicks in. So in summary of all of that stuff, I reckon it would ask to you would be to develop some sort of action plan that integrates biodiversity and biosecurity and how we draw all these strands together so that we use the scarce resources that we have for biodiversity and for biosecurity to get the best outcomes for the environment and for our communities. And then it sort of speaks right back to the proposed climate levy and how that money might be used for nature-based climate solutions to create resilience as well. So that's pretty much all I have to say. I'm happy to take any questions if you have any.
Oh, thank you Nikki. I'm sure there'll be somebody with a question. In fact, there's councillor Lan Farm. You're up first.
Yeah, Kia ora. Thanks Jenny. Kia ora Nikki. Thanks for Forest and Bird's submission. You already mentioned or highlighted the role of ECAN in terms of regional leadership on biodiversity. And I know in your written submission, you refer to the biodiversity collaborative group's report. Do you want to just put some words or context around why you added that and what you wanted to draw our attention to?
Yes, absolutely Lan. So the biodiversity collaborative group was the group established a number of years ago by MFE to develop the national policy statement for biodiversity, which is hopefully coming really soon. And then that sort of sets some national direction on protecting SNA, significant natural areas in our communities and how we might go forward. I attached that report to my submission because part three of that report sets out the complementary measures that the group worked on in order to help implement that strategy. And this is something that we have been working a bit more closely with MFE on how we might do this. And, you know, to draw their attention to this as well, because I'm not sure how closely they had read it. But one of the complementary measures was to establish regional hubs, which is kind of along the lines that Lan, you have been doing with the territorial authorities out there. And this is where you pool your resources and you utilise your expertise and help the district councils to fulfil their functions for biodiversity under the RMA. So yeah, that's kind of what I was alluding to with that. And it would be good to kind of expand that out and also, you know, integrate it with biosecurity as well. So basically it's about having a really tight group of people across regional and district councils so that we're all pulling in the same direction in order to implement the national policy statement for biodiversity when it finally does get gazetted. Yeah, because my experience is at the moment is that it's really uneven across Canterbury, especially the district councils in terms of identifying significant natural areas and then maintaining them, which is their obligation under the Resource Management Act. So yeah, that's why I drew your attention to that bit, because it would be great to see that regional hub supercharged, especially when the MPS is finally gazetted.
Oh, thank you for that.
Jenny, you're on mute, but I think you're probably saying I can ask my question now. So I'll ask my question now. So yeah, just under point 10, Nikki, you mentioned about a green levy for gravel extraction, either with the extractors or the end users. And I'm just wondering if you, could you elaborate a bit on that? Is it something that's been used before in New Zealand or elsewhere? Can you give a bit more detail? Thank you.
I'm not sure if it's been used elsewhere, but I know, you know, Forest and Bird is one of these sort of go-to places when people have issues with things where they're not getting any traction with agencies. And one of them is the gravel extraction out of the riverbeds and the impact on native habitat and river flow and all that sort of thing. So I don't know. We have the gravel strategy, right? And I don't know if that needs a review. But then about where gravel's taken from and how gravel is taken, how it's measured or where it goes and what it's used for. So I guess it's an opportunity to have a look if we could get money from the end users or the gravel extractors to actually put back into managing the riverbeds in a better way that supports the natural ecosystem.
Well, thank you Nikki, and we are doing a review of that at the moment. So we might move on quickly now to councillor Phil Clearwater, and that will be the last question.
Thank you very much Nikki. I've got two questions if there's time for these. The first one was, I just wondered if you might elaborate a little on your points about the collateral damage from spraying and having a need for accredited contractors, just maybe even some examples of that. The other question is where you referred to the, in your written submission, to the green levy to be targeted at where there's non-compliance with pest management plans, about any suggestions about how we might incorporate that suggestion of the green levy?
Yeah, okay. So the first one, yeah, there's been a couple of incidences recently where large areas of indigenous biodiversity have been sprayed. And they've been investigated, but it turns out that, you know, it always ends in sort of the same spot where the land occupier says, well, I was told to spray this by ECAN. And ECAN is like, well, because to comply with the pest management plan. But then Environment Canterbury is like, no, that's not what we asked, we didn't ask them to do that. So there's just a bit of a problem in there. And even I have done a bit of a search on some of the strain contractors out there and they actually have, they advertise on their website to spray things like Mata Gari and Manuka. So it's advertised, they do it. So what I'm saying is perhaps there's a need to like educate that these areas are really important recovering biodiversity areas. And also for contractors to have some sort of ecological training so that when they go out there, they're not kind of like doing the scorched earth policy to get rid of the weeds and knock off all the biodiversity at the same time. I do see it. And we've also had a couple of incidences where SNA's have been sprayed and that hasn't resulted in, you know, we've lost the biodiversity, we've lost the SNA. And it usually results in a lengthy sort of mediation process, which is not good for anybody. So it would be good to get ahead of the eight ball and have some good education around weed spraying in terms of areas of biodiversity upfront. So if you had this action plan for biodiversity and biosecurity, that could be one of the actions in there is to work with the farmers and spraying contractors about what we're trying to achieve here. The second point was about the green level on, remind me again what you asked?
This particular green levy for when there's non-compliance around, for example, a pest management plan.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. So where there's weeds getting away on people's places, then, you know, if they're causing, especially if they're causing, if they're not complying with the good neighbour rule, then use that as a leverage to, you know, fine them for it as a green levy. That's what I meant by that. Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you very much Nikki. Thank you for taking your time to come in today. We really appreciate it. And thank you for all the ideas that you've raised. We can be, we'll be exploring those. So thanks very much Nikki. Have a good day.
Good luck. Have a good day. Thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Yeah, it's great to hear from you. So who have we got next Christina?
Hello Chair Jenny, it's Vivoe here. Our next speaker will be Mark Alexander.
Okay. So Mark, are you there? Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Oh, hi Mark. Welcome to our hearing.
Good morning.
There you are. We could see the inside of a beautiful bus.
Yeah, I thought that, I thought that background highlights the first point in my submission about public transport fears.
I think it worked. You've got about 10 minutes, but we suggest you go for about five or six and then we can have some questions. So off you go.
Thank you. This isn't the first rodeo that I've taken part in. I made a few points. Public transport, I support option two, the flat fare, single zone option. It actually achieves a far better potential increase in PT patronage than any other option, particularly in Selwyn and Waimakareiri. And the reduction in carbon footprint for each vehicle we can take off the road, commuting to or from Selwyn and Waimakareiri is much more significant than a vehicle taken off the roads within Christchurch. Currently, the two or three zones is a significant impediment to PT uptake. At the moment, with the government's COVID reduction, it is actually very attractive to use the PT system, much more than it usually is. And I am a supporter and user of public transport system. But we're trying to reach those who don't currently use it. And at for Selwyn from Rolston, 7.70 a day is just not attractive. Half that, and it becomes attractive to use PT to get into or out of Christchurch. The flood recovery rating, I support the proposed borrowing to fund that. However, I don't support that it be fully funded at the general rate. I think there is definitely a general public good benefit from this recovery works. But there's also a bigger benefit for those who directly relate to the protection being provided. And I think there should be a more nuanced recovery of this loan funding, that it should be a general rate component reflecting the regional benefit of this. But it should also be a targeted rate component, recognising that there are definitely those who benefit far more than average from this. And I'd use this as a model in general for this sort of recovery, both a general rate and a targeted rate reflecting the more nuanced benefits of this kind of system. The Ashburton flood protection costs not involved. As an outsider looking in, I wondered whether you could introduce these changes over a longer period? Because there's some quite significant changes, both up and down in a single year, can cause stress on rate passers. Whereas if you step it in over a longer timeframe, that may be easier for people. And finally, my final comment, and I'll just find that, just bear with me a moment, is around ECAN's continued submissions on Selwyn plan changes. It seems ironic that ECAN itself is submitting on Selwyn plan changes, asking for better provision for public transport. When that's actually the provision of public transport is your responsibility, it's not Selwyn's. Our riding engineers will ensure that there are PT routes available within these subdivisions. But provision of PT is your business, not our business, not Selwyn's business. So I'm actually here speaking as a Selwyn rate per. But it just seems somewhat curious that ECAN continually submits on the provision of PT services when it's in fact ECAN that's responsible for it. Thank you.
Councillor Kian Akai, you did.
Kia ora Jenny. Kia ora Mark, how are you? Just a question. You commented that $7.70 per day is not attractive. And it's a comment that we have had in a lot of the submissions and the previous presenters to us. Is that purely from an affordability perspective or from a bus service perspective? And if it's from an affordability perspective, have people or have you taken into account the actual running cost, the depreciation and everything else of running a vehicle in? Because it just seems, I'm a little confused when I hear people use that as an argument when I think of a expense of a, whether it's a $2,000 car or five or 20, whatever.
It's people's perception. They don't look at the full running cost of the vehicle. They look at what it costs to run a vehicle, what they put in fuel in for that trip and what they pay for parking versus what it costs in the bus fare. People don't realise the true cost of running a vehicle is about three times the fuel cost. But it's their simple face to face. If you've got a car that uses five litres, 100K, the commute from Rolston to town, if you can get free parking, uses less petrol, costing petrol than it does in the bus fare, and it takes you quite considerable time. So you're balancing the time and perceived cost. And a much lower fare starts to lower that resistance. It's always getting the people on the journey for the first few times is the hard part. And a low of fare just makes it intrinsically more attractive.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. All right. Well, listen, there's a following up question. Councillor Phil Clearwater.
Brilliant, Mark. And thank you for your submission and interpretation. Now, just on your support of the flat fare, I just wondered if you might elaborate a bit? Because I think you said that we would achieve better PT patronage through having that, supporting that option in terms of patronage. I just wonder if you want to elaborate on how that might happen? Particularly, I guess, because the option one would apply more to the city residents. So were you referring to residents, better patronage for residents in the district councils? Or just if you could elaborate on that?
It's meant to be a greater Christchurch service. So option one does nothing for Selwyn and Waimakareiri, nothing at all in comparison to option two. If you're looking for a Christchurch service, yeah, choose option one. But you're not going to achieve the climate goals that ECAN and particularly Christchurch City want by making PT unattractive to Selwyn and Waimakareiri. As I said, the CO2 production gains are much bigger for every vehicle we can get off the road from Selwyn and Waimakareiri than within Christchurch. So it seems to me that the patronage we want to increase is the adult commuter from Selwyn and Waimakareiri as well as within Christchurch. But the, most of the groups that will benefit from option one will also benefit from option two, not to the same extent. But option one offers nothing to me, for example. If I was regularly commuting into the city, I would get nothing out of option one. It would be not an encouragement at all.
Thank you, Mark. There's been, if I may, there's been some, ask you this, there's been some suggestions from other submitters around having some form of a hybrid between the two options. Is that something that you would see as potentially workable or do you think?
Without knowing what it is, I mean, essentially, I think it's the KISS principle, keep it simple. And option two is the simplest system. It'll be the easiest to promote. As I've said previously, two zones from Rolston to Templeton or Lincoln to Privleton, but one zone from Templeton or Privleton to Sumner just doesn't seem fair equitable. And, you know, you can recover the cost through the targeted rate on Selwyn rate passers, the Selwyn's cost portion of that cost. The difference to the householder in Selwyn won't be noticed, but the benefits will be.
Thank you, Mark, and good to see you on the bus.
Wow. Thank you very much, Mark, for your submission and taking the time. Yes, and definitely for your background picture. It's great. We love it. And we will definitely take on board all the comments that you've made alongside everyone else's comments. So thanks very much and have a good day.
Thank you. Bye.
Right. So who have we got next? Vivoe?
Next to submit will be Richard Shaw.
Oh, welcome, Richard. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can Jenny. Can you see and hear me?
How are you?
Good, thank you.
Yes. So what we're doing here is we've got about 10 minutes. If you'd like to speak a little less than 10 minutes, then we can have some questions. So just, and you can take it, we've all read your submission. So over to you.
Okay. Yeah, I guess then to iterate what I've sort of said there, I think the proposed size of the rate increase is somewhat excessive. It really suggests that, you know, things have been rapidly changing over the past couple of years, that people and businesses battle to rebuild post-COVID. And now we find ourselves in a tonne of significant inflationary pressures. To have the rate increases proposed to be more than three times higher than what is a record high inflation level is just unreasonable and affordable. I mean, I think a primary objective of ECAN is to be looking after canterbians. And in that regard, you should be setting the lead and supporting the people of Canterbury. And I think an aspirational outcome would be to lessen inflationary pressures rather than adding to them. ECAN shouldn't be part of the problem, it should be part of the solution. You know, there was a programme on national radio the other day was asking a food group why food prices were so high. And they basically named three things. They said one was fuel, the second was fertiliser, and the third one was rates. So rates have a direct link to people's costs of living, costs of production. So by having these very large rate increases, ECAN is essentially increasing inflation and driving up the cost of production. I think what we've got to do is to have a look at prioritisation of what's been done. I mean, there are lots of very good programmes there. And there are lots more that could be done if you had an endless budget. But none of us have an endless, or I certainly don't. Very few of us have an endless open budget. And so I think that there has to be some rationalisation here of looking at what is prioritised. And while you can look at it and say, well, it's all important things, with the current situation that we've got, we really just can't, a lot of people can't afford to put food on the table. They can't afford their grocery bill, they can't afford their remortgage payments, and it's getting worse. So they certainly aren't going to afford a 20% plus increase in their rates. So I mean, I'd really like to suggest that you revisit the work programme. You review what can be removed, what can be deferred. You review what can be removed, what can be deferred, what can be cut back and look at what you can do to reduce costs. Do that for a lot of people in Canterbury. And there are plenty of people who can afford the increases, but there's a very large portion of people that can't. And the other one to make is the proposed climate levy. And there's a big, big risk about putting something out there. I mean, it's, it's nice to say, well, we'll have something which is a fallback position in the case of unexpected events. But again, at this time, when people are under a lot of financial pressure, to be effectively saying, we're going to put a levy in, which, let's call it by any other name, is just another additional increase in rates really. So it's, it's a boost above and beyond what we've already, already getting hit with. And that's on top of the large increases we've already had in previous years and the full cost recovery for resource consent. So if you start adding in all the costs that have been added and what's proposing to be added, the compound effect is huge. So on that levy, I mean, I think if there isn't an actual clear defined area that's going to be spent on, it's incredibly difficult to justify having it right now. I mean, I think, you know, we need to be cognizant of the fact that a lot of businesses are still struggling. A lot of people had to go and claim wage subsidies and they've got 80% of what they were earning previously. And a lot of those people in hospitality and entertainment are still not back at where they would be. So they, they need help. They don't need to be burdened with increased costs. That pretty much covers what I wanted to say.
All right. So thank you very much. Has anybody got a question for Richard? Councillor Lance Farm.
Yeah, thanks for your submission, Richard, and thanks for taking the time to speak to it as well. It definitely makes it much come alive more for us. So really appreciate that. My question was just around, you know, the percentage increases and particularly the average increase of about 24%. Do you think, is your primary issue with it like the percentage figure? Or do you think, like, have you looked at the actual dollar figures that, for example, yourself might be experiencing in terms of the rate rise? And is that personally a problem for you? Because for a lot of the lower at least value properties, the actual dollar figures are about $2 or less a week in terms of increase. But I'm just wondering if you've looked at your own dollar figures and if that's going to be an increased burden for you.
I don't have any work in New Zealand. All my work is overseas. So this afternoon, I'm getting on the plane for the first time in two and a half years to actually go to work. So when you're asking me that question, that's, that's a little bit tough. So, you know, fortune, I mean, the fortunate position that I had savings that I can draw on. I don't really agree with, with saying, oh, you know, it's only $2 a week. Because that's the same with a whole bunch of different things, you know. We invested money to, to make ourselves more environmentally friendly by having solar hot water heating and by putting in additional insulation. Putting in a more efficient fire and a wetback, which generate, we use firewood from our own woodlot. So we're trying to do our bit there. And then we get hit with a 100% increase in our standing charge for our electricity because of changes in policy around low users subsidizing high users. I'm like, well, I'm a low user because I invested money to actually make myself more efficient. It's a disincentive to be more efficient. So all those costs add up and you can turn around and say, oh, it's only $10 a week. But I mean, it's coming from every direction. So right now, every increase that's coming in that's significantly above inflation is just piling on top of everything else, whether it's fuel, electricity, rates, food, there is nothing that's going down. And there's nothing.
Thanks for explaining on that.
Okay.
Yes, thanks, Richard. We've got a question from Councillor John Sunco.
Thanks, Richard, for your, for your submission. This is probably an open question, you may choose not to answer it. You talked about prioritization. Do you have a, I guess, some clarity into where we possibly should be looking to prioritize? Or just a general, it's, it's too much and we should be looking?
Well, I, I was, no, not, not wanting to stand offhand, but that to me would be a job for, for ECAN to determine where the prioritization of expenditure should go. I mean, you put some significant increases in last, last time round. And the strong justification for that was to do a lot of positive work with regard to climate change. And while I come to that stage that I thought the increases were, were high, I mean, I'm supportive of us doing the right thing for the environment and I agree that, you know, we, we need to be looking at that and looking for the future. But at the same time, you know, we, we can't just keep ramping everything up and doing everything. You've, you've got to look at, you've said before, an endless amount of money would still not deal with all the things that we'd like to address. So we have to prioritize and there'll be some things which should be cut or could be cut. And it may be uncomfortable and they may not be what you want to do. But it's the hard decisions, you know, it's easy to spend more money, it's really difficult to make the cuts. But that's a sign of a really strong council, one that can recognize when its rate payers are under pressure and it needs to do the right thing by them.
Thank you, Richard.
Yes, thank you very much, Richard. I think that's, there doesn't appear to be any more questions that we have for you. But we've read your submission and thank you very much. We really appreciate. Everybody, like Councillor Lance Farm said, it's about making it come alive. But it's also about, we need to take what you've said into consideration and we will be. So very good. So thank you very much. It's really appreciated.
Thank you very much for the opportunity and good luck with the rest of the submissions and deliberations that come afterwards.
And good luck with your trip overseas.
Thank you. Okay, goodbye.
Bye. Have we got another person now? Who's, who's, who am I asking? Vivvo? Oh, we're going on a recess now. So we haven't got anybody else.
There are no more submitters for this session.
So those other two haven't turned up.
No, they have not.
All right then, thanks very much. So we'll have a break now.
So for people who are online and don't know me, I'm Phil Clearwater. I've been asked to chair this part of the session for this, for today, session two for today. And welcome to you as submitters, especially who've come on board to talk to us. So basically, just in terms of the, what we'll do is each of you will have up to 10 minutes to speak in total. And it'd be good if you can keep your points succinct and if you speak, say, for around half of that time or five or six minutes, that will give us as councillors time to ask you questions, which we'd like to be able to do. So, and I'll just mention to councillors too, it'd be good, I won't necessarily, because we've got quite a, a long, a good list of submitters in the timeframe, we may not be able to take all questions. But that, please put your hand up often. It's some people, some people are quick on the draw, but don't hesitate to put your hand up too. It is good to hear from as many as possible. Okay, so I think Russell Turnbull is, and councillor's his, his, there's GoBuses deputation is on page 21 of our agenda. Welcome, Russell. Good to see you. And I think you've got a power point for us too, Russell.
Yes, thank, thank you very much as chair and thank you everyone else for joining. Thank you councillors and officers who might be in the room. I'll share my screen now and all going well, be able to follow me through my presentation. Can you see a slide that says bus fare structure submission?
We, we can see that.
Right, I'll, I'll just talk, talk that through. So yeah, my name's Russell Turnbull, so I'm pleased to be able to speak on behalf of GoBus. And personally, I've been involved in public transport for over 25 years now, both working for council, working for bus operators and as a consultant. So I've kind of seen the industry from, from all three sides. For, for GoBus, this is the bit where I get excited. Let's probably just give a bit of background about GoBus for those who aren't, aren't aware. So we have about 2,000 vehicles across the country. And when I, what I mean by that is that we have 30 depots spaced between Auckland and Vicarage. And if you put all our kilometers together that we run every year, you would run our buses 74 times between the moon and back. So we do a fair amount of kilometers over the country. We run urban buses, obviously in Christchurch, but also coaches, school buses, charter buses. So there's not much of public transport we're not into. And here in Christchurch, we've been operating since 2010, so over 12 years now. And we have our main depots in Bromley and Middleton. And as noted there, we have 234 vehicles and 420 employees. I'd also like to note, we also have a depot in Kaipoi with 43 vehicles and 45 employees. And we're looking to establish another depot down in Rolston. So fairly good distribution. And as I said in our submission, we actually are not only a very big partner to environment canterbriands of our public transport, we're also a sizable employer in the region as well. So moving on to, you know, our submission. And look, the principles behind our submission are in a way aligned with you. We, we want to grow public transport in Canterbury, not only because it's, it's good obviously for our business, but we, you know, fully understand the benefits of decongesting our roads and reducing transport related emissions. So, so we are fully aligned on, on that. And, and we kind of want to really sort of bring out in our submission, you know, the principles about successful public transport. And McKinsey and Co did a big study back in 2018 of 24 global cities. And they saw basically five major success factors about public transport. So it's availability and that's basically that there's public transport where I want to go and where I want to go. Affordability, which is obviously important to councillors considering this particular subject. And efficiency, and that's all about reliability and, and speed of journey. Is, is the public transport journey I want to make going to be competitive with other options? And of course, finally, convenience and under convenience comes comfort and ease of bringing up to purchase a fare etc. So those are the sort of the five principles behind our, our submission and, and why we're taking our particular stance. But the main thing I think in our submission is about what, what does, what is the fare proposal going to do with regards improving the number of people on, on the, on the buses? And in our sites, vermin, there are commuters. So think about that as I go through, through this. So, so option one is basically an option that, that we see is, is a very big step. And it's not one that, you know, we particularly favor. We fully understand how this would be a major step for improving affordability of, of public transport to, to the under 25. So we fully understand why council might support that. But as far as a patronage generating tool, we're not sure it's going to hit that same mark. Now, the reason I say that is that under 25s essentially, a lot of them are already public transport users. So the ability to actually transform those few that are remaining who aren't public transport users isn't, isn't a big thing. Also, we are really wary of free fares. Now, we've, we've had experience of running free fares. And what we've found unfortunately is that the value of public transport disappears when people don't actually have to pay a fare. So we've seen antisocial behavior on buses because they can just generally jump on them and, and use them to either get from A to B for no particular reason or just stay on the bus and, and cause trouble. And that can be a real issue, say, in, in winter with, for instance, people like who, who perhaps shouldn't be on the bus. They should be in, in other areas, but they stay on the bus because it's warm. So that causes problems, you know, when the fare is free. And, and to be honest, if you get that happening, you start getting a poor public perception of public transport. Because people who are genuinely on the bus to get from A to B are discovering that others are on the bus for not the same reason and they feel uncomfortable. And potentially there's antisocial behavior. So it introduces a different element to bus transport when the travel is free. The other thing too, of course, is what you're going to add in the form of complexity of administering a, a scheme for under 25. So school kids are normally fine to define for their cheaper fares are in school uniform or have a school ID. Two, three students can have school, school ID, two, three IDs, but they're not in uniform. But what are you going to do about IDs for people under 25? And honestly, it's a poor old bus driver who's sitting there saying, is this person actually valid to travel on my buses? You know, and they're having to make the, make that, that call. And it's, and it's a situation that we don't really like to put our bus drivers in. So a quick summary of that is multiple concession times and the velocity for travel can cause problems for the driver. And when you get those problems, trips slow down because passengers take longer to board because they're arguing, oh yes, I'm, I can get here and my valid, my ID is valid for my trip etc. So we're not really in favor of that for those reasons. Option two, we support because it improves affordability for everybody on, on the bus. And what's really important is that the daily commuter, they're traveling on the, on the bus, say, 220 days of the year. And they're the ones, if we can get off the road, drive in their, their car to work and onto the bus instead, that will be the ones that make the real difference to congestion and to emissions. And that's where you can probably get the biggest bang for your, your buck. So that's, that's kind of our, our big reason that we support option two. The other reason is it keeps things simple. We've always been in great admiration of how simple the fare system is in Canterbury. There are very few concessionary fares. It's very simple. Who gets a child fare and who pays an adult fare? And what we see is that option two continues that great attribute to the public transport system in Canterbury. So we really want to accentuate how keeping things simple with ticketing systems and giving the, you know, everybody a cheaper fare will have the biggest impact on patronage because it affects, has the biggest effect. And finally, look, option three is really a kind of repeat of option one. And that's we're targeting a single small group for, for cheaper fares. Those groups will have to have ID cards they'll have to show to the driver to have a fare that causes conflict between the driver and, and the passenger, which can hold up the bus, can create unpleasant situations on board the bus. And basically the type of thing that it doesn't enhance public perception of, of public transport. So let's stop at the time. So in conclusion, we support option two because it's most likely to lead to the most noticeable increase in public transport. It encourages longer journeys because of the flat fare system. So passengers from Selwyn and Waimea Makareeri, they're going to get an incredible deal. But perhaps that's exactly what you want. There's more people on those buses because they're the ones who are doing those long trips all the way into town, for instance. And if you got them off the road, that would free up the road for more local trips. Keep the fare simple, fare system simple. There's no more ID cards required or whatever. It's still a simple adult child fare system. And overall, I think it has the most positive impact for the public perception of public transport. That's my submission or our submission.
Thanks, Russell. There's about one minute left, so we might have time for one quick question. If the councillor has got a question in relation to your, what you've put forward. And I see councillor Fiki Southwood has.
Yeah, Kiara, thank you. And I appreciate you bringing your views because obviously it does come from a really experienced background with lots of knowledge. But one thing I am curious about is that when we look at our Metro User Survey, the most satisfied group of customers is our gold card holders, the over 65s. And so how does that work? And do they create, I've been a bit facetious here, but are they creating anti? And so how does that work? And do they create, I've been a bit facetious here, but are they creating antisocial behaviour during the day when they have that free travel? Thank you.
I think you may have answered your question yourself. No. We have had experience in Hamilton of free travel for, I think it was under 18s. And we had a significant increase in antisocial behaviour. So I've got real evidence of that happening, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you.
Russell, thank you very much for your presentation and submission. That's been very clear. And I guess a summary of it too is one of the supporters this morning made it clear that, in fact, we have the KISS principle to keep in mind. So and it was very clear presentation. Thank you so much for making the time and coming and talking with us and for your PowerPoint too, the way you spoke to us.
And thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. So I think it's James Harris. Have we got James with us, Christina?
James, it hasn't arrived, so Joshua Orton will be next.
Joshua. So Joshua Orton, can we hear from you, Joshua? I think Joshua is speaking from, is it Massey at a distance, Josh?
Yeah, the Massey Distance Student Association.
Oh, so you've got 10 minutes. If you speak for about five and give us time to ask you some questions will be really great. Is that okay?
Right. Absolutely. I think I'll be done well before five. Yeah. So I'm the director of wellbeing at the Massey Distance Society. And what most people don't realise is that Massey at Distance within the Massey University School is actually larger than the Wellington campus, the Palmerston North campus and the Auckland campus combined. And so we have a really big group. And of that group, a lot of students call Tuaipunamui or Tatahi home, much like myself. And we typically wouldn't submit on strategies like this because often the points being discussed are quite convoluted to understand. But with fares for free transport on the cards, we thought it was too good of an opportunity to pass up. So in short, we would love to support option one for the targeted fares free for two years. To be frank, option two and three would also be really great for tertiary students utilising public transport. But as a student who experienced fares free when I studied in Palmerston North, I can attest to how much more appealing it is for the services to be free. Any financial barrier to public transport is a barrier to using it. And to remove that barrier, we think will really encourage significant uptake in the public transport system. The modelling in your reports suggests that it might be around a 22% increase in users. And to be honest, I wouldn't be too surprised to see it grow higher than that in the years following as people travel the system and begin to see value in their lives. So yeah, Massey Distance students are a little different to your usual student cohort, cohort, sorry. For example, what you might see with the University of Canterbury, most of our students study part-time, some of them will study full-time, while also working part-time work, sometimes full-time work as well. And often while supporting a family, they're also a slightly older cohort. But they're both very often time and financially limited. And so fares for buses also solve both problems and offer this group an environmentally efficient mode of travel, either to their local library or home from their part-time work, usually at off-peak hours. So yeah, just to reiterate our support as an association for option one of the fares free structure and just to convey our thanks for considering this in your plan process.
Right. Look, thank you, Josh. Questions from councillors. I see councillor Claire Mackay has a question. Clear.
Kiora, Josh, just wondering, you mentioned that you'd had fare-free transport at Massey. I'm presuming that was at Massey University when you were in Palmerston. You didn't say that, but I assumed that. If that assumption's correct, do you know, was it the university that actually subsidised those? Or was it a ratepayer-based funding system that where all young people right across Palmerston North got the free fares?
I don't know for certain, but what I do remember, yes, this was Palmerston North Massey campus, was that all students, whether they were from the university or the tertiary, sorry, secondary schools, and they would use their student ID cards as their swipe to enter. And so based on that, I would assume that the university wouldn't have subsidised the secondary schools and that it was probably a city council initiative.
Thank you. It's just that it was a conversation. We have been progressing with the tertiary institutions luckily. But yeah, just wondering about that. Thank you.
I see councillor Anne Farm has a question too, Josh.
Yeah, Kiora, Josh, thanks for your submission. I'm noting in both your written submission, what you've said to us today, that you still think option two would be like pretty good. Do you think there is something about that free aspect compared to like a very low cost, like $2 or $1? Can you expand a bit on that?
Yeah, I think if, thinking back to my kind of experience on campus, if there was even a very low cost, we probably would have used someone's car, to be honest. The appeal of free for students, I wouldn't underestimate it. Most of them don't carry cash anymore. Yeah, and it is a barrier to load money onto a car. So we would see option one as the best option for students' uptake on public transport. But certainly, to be honest, a gold coin $2, $20, I think, was option two. Yeah, better than where it's at. So we wouldn't say no to that.
Well, thanks for clarifying it.
Look, thank you, Josh. Well, I've got a question before we let you go too. And that is, I noted your suggestion around the climate change levy, like a sponsorship for tertiary studies. And I thought it was a really good idea, actually, as to how a fund could be used. Is there any particular area of that tertiary study that really might assist us with, I guess, climate change resilience?
Yeah, I'm thinking around that was mostly in the innovation space. So I wouldn't want to be too prescriptive.
That's okay. You don't need to, but I just, yeah, look, and thank you for giving, not only that, some thought, but your whole presentation has been really good. And we very much appreciate your presentation, Josh, and the time you've taken to talk to us today, but also you put it into preparing it. So thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Did I, Christina, did I see Sophie McInnes be next?
Yes, Sophie McInnes is next.
Kiora, Sophie? I can't hear you yet. Can you take your microphone off?
Aha. Kiora, hello.
Kiora, you probably know the rules, I think, Sophie. Up to 10 minutes and if you give us some time for questions, it'd be great.
Cool. Yeah, thank you very much for hearing me speak today. I am here just speaking as me for my father, my friends, not any positions that I happen to hold that interlink with anything environment Canterbury does. And yeah, just a quick thank you before I start. I'm sure you guys have been listening to an awful lot of submissions and it's a long and tiring job. So thank you for dealing with it. So yeah, I support option one regarding the bus fans. I think it's the option most likely to entice additional passengers out of their cars, especially single occupancy vehicles and into public transport. I do like in some ways the idea of a single zone system, so option two. But the biggest winners in terms of the $2 fare would be outlying townships. And while I kind of like that idea, there's a very limited service there. Cheap fares are great. But if there's no bus route heading where you need to be at a time of day that you need to travel, then it's pretty useless. So for instance, the 3,000 people living in Darfield have one bus in and out every day. But it's not even every day. It's only on weekdays. So a $2 fare doesn't actually support them at all. They'd be rated less, but they gave no extra benefit. And the people who already want to catch that bus are already on the bus and there isn't going to be room for that many more. So that leads me back to option one, because the area with the most bus routes and the most people is already within one single zone, and that's Christchurch. I don't know the figures, but I'm going to guess that there's more students in zone one, given the number of tertiary institutions and more of all the other categories as well. Yes, it's a more expensive option from a ratepayer perspective, but the people who would qualify for free fares are the ones who are hardest hit by current fuel and food prices anyway, let alone housing costs. Obviously, if nobody's immune, everything's going up. But if you didn't have many pennies to rub together in the first place, you're the one who's going to benefit from the free fares. I did catch the end of the Go Bus presentation and they raised some fair points, no pun intended. Just thinking, under 25s are actually used to being, having to provide evidence of their age in terms of accessing certain venues or buying alcohol. So there's going to be a way of identifying under 25s. And as far as the potential for antisocial behaviour goes, I believe it's Dr Kirsty Wild up in Auckland, who has shown that that may or may not be the case. She's got research that shows otherwise as well. And the idea of this whole thing is that it's a trial. We get to find out. It hasn't been tried in Canterbury, let alone in Christchurch before. And people don't trash libraries. They're free. So not entirely certain that they're going to go trashing a bus. Regarding flooding, because it's not all about buses today, is it? If anything, the river rating system in general probably needs a bit of a review. There's a lot of rivers, a lot of them don't have schemes, and they all have the potential to flood and cause a great deal of damage. So totally support ECAN in trying to convince central government that, particularly in terms of nationally important infrastructure, that they need to contribute because highways, crossing rivers, various other things, you know, it's nationally important infrastructure. I haven't had a chance to read the National Draft Adaptation Plan yet, hoping that there might be something in there, but not sure. And regarding the climate change levy, absolutely support this idea. Adaptation and mitigation is going to be hugely expensive and unpopular and divisive, which makes it even more important to collectively get on with the job. In terms of how to use it, I'd love to suggest things like more my-way trials in places like Ashburton that have no public transport at the moment. Or trialling additional express services from places in, from townships in Selwyn and Wymacareri at different times of day, because at the moment, it's a long ride into Christchurch if you do want to get in there. And you can only go morning and evening, or even extending some rural bus routes. Community energy action, on a different note, I believe they receive some funding from ECAN at the moment. If they've submitted with some ideas of how they could expand their services, I would love to support that as well. They do a fantastic job with the subsidies and the people and the advice that they can give out at the moment. And the more people who could benefit from that, the better, because our housing stock needs a lot of retrofitting to become more energy efficient. And a lot of people don't qualify for what's available right now. So that is me. Many thanks for listening. Anyone got a question?
Thank you very much, Sophie. And councillor Claire Mackay is first with a question.
Kiora, Sophie, how are you? Thank you very much for your presentation. I was keen to hear your comment around the fact that the example you used, the Darfield folk have got limited service. So therefore, option, I think it was one, was not going to benefit them. Option two wasn't going to benefit them, which was, whichever one, it doesn't, it doesn't, yeah, option two wasn't going to benefit them. But then if you think of your preference, which is going to option one, then the ratepayers are actually probably going to pay considerably more and they're still not going to get any benefits. So are you thinking that perhaps Selwyn may be separated from the Christchurch city? Or still part of the whole scheme from the options point of view?
As I understand it, at the moment, the outlying townships are rated a certain amount on a different level as far as the PT rates goes at the moment. So yes, they probably see an increase. We did have, I did see a spreadsheet which had an indication of how much Darfield and Leeston and that sort of thing would be rated. And yes, it would go up, but in terms of the people who commute from there into Christchurch, they would benefit still in the sense that if there are a few particularly single occupancy vehicles on the road within Christchurch, then there'd be less congestion, less fighting to try and find a car park and that sort of thing, which would save them money just in petrol costs. So this is my beautiful daughter Chloe, who wants to come into. Yeah. I get that people will pay money regardless. But this is, you know, reducing vehicle movements isn't going to happen without people paying money.
Yeah, I just, I guess with the limited service, then we can only get a bus full of people each way, can't we? So thank you.
Darfield wouldn't benefit that much from any of the options that you've provided. They would benefit from a more frequent service, which isn't on the table right now.
Thanks, Claire. Thanks, Sophie. And councillor Ian McKensy has a question, Sophie.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Sophie. On the same lines as Claire asked a question. There's been quite a lot of people out your way, out in Selwyn that way, asking for rerouting the buses to get their children into their choice of school in Christchurch. And so, yes. And I guess my question to you is, would the option one just effectively, you know, put the cost of those people making the choice of where they want to send their kids to school, free for them, but impose that cost on ratepayers in the Selwyn district?
Only if there were additional buses that were travelling into Christchurch. So at the moment, there's a collective in Darfield and one in Lincoln who are, they've done their own private arrangements with a bus company to bring kids into their schools. If they want to send their kids to outzone schools, then that's their choice.
No, no, we've been rerouting buses to make it more convenient for kids to go from at least, to say, into Christchurch.
Personally, I mean, and this is my personal thought, I wouldn't support rerouting more buses to take kids to schools that they're not zoned for. There are plenty of other needs for your buses elsewhere. But there's always an interesting thought around Ministry of Education buses and the ones that, you know, the routes that they travel in rural areas, but that's a different question.
Thanks, Sophie. Thank you for the question again. And Sophie, we're just about out of time, but look, thank you very much. There's one point I was going to make, and you also had a, besides the community energy action being potentially as an organisation that could be, and work that could benefit from a climate change levy. I noticed you also mentioned that helping smaller councils prepare for climate strategies. And personally, I thought that was a good suggestion. There's a lot of smaller councils besides the big ones. Sophie, thank you very much for a very clear presentation. It's very much been appreciated. And thanks for your time, because we know you're a very busy person.
Cool. Thank you very much. Enjoy the rest of your day.
Thanks, Sophie. So I think, I think I saw Nick Stoneman online just before.
Hello, Nick. Hi, Phil. I'm here.
Nice to see you. And thank you for coming and talking with us, as well as your presentation.
Yep. Okay, so hi all. I'm Nick Stoneman. I'm senior disability service navigator with NZ Disability Advisory Trust. I'm also part of Busco Canterbury and I'm also a public transport advocate. So the option right now, as a disability organisation, we support is option one, making all of Christchurch, Selwyn, Wymacarrie, Zone One. We're also presently supporting, very well supporting the half-price fares at the moment, which is an absolute really, really amazing thing to do. We'd like to see it extended a whole lot further and potentially made permanent. The other option that we're sort of in the same camp about is probably the flat fare idea as well, which is, which I believe is the $2 flat fare. In terms of zonal boundaries, at present, it's one zone for me from Sydney to Kainga on one bus all the way through. If I go north of Kainga, it's obviously becomes two. It's also one zone from Sydney to Rolleston, Sydney to Templeton for me. So if I go through to Rolleston or I go through to Western Elgin, it immediately becomes a two-zone fare. Not that I have an issue with that, but it would be a lot cheaper if those zones were included. Not that I have an issue with that, but it would be a lot cheaper if those zones were included. In terms of the Darfield service, and I, as I came in, I heard it mentioned, as one of the ones that very much backed the initial starting of the Darfield service way back in 2018. And it started in 2019. I've been one of the very loud vocal parties on it. I would like to see, and some of the feedback that I've received as an advocate, I'd like to see the Darfield service improved. I'm hearing in the mornings at the moment that it is a full seated load once it leaves West Melton. Because a lot of kids are going to the schools on the route, they're not choosing to use the school bus, they're using the public bus. So there is no seating space for full fare paying adults. So in that proposal, I would like just, we would like to see a, an additional bus, an additional bus maybe run from West Melton that starts at West Melton to pick up those locals that could probably go to Kewee and pick up the locals, the Darfield one coming express to the city. Stopping at various points along the way. In terms of other service extensions in the Selwyn district. The other thought, the other thought has occurred is that maybe something could be done with the 820, which is the Lincoln Burnham shuttle. Given the drivers have nearly 45 minutes sit over at Burnham on every trip, something that could be extended to go out to further into the district. I don't know, maybe Darfield, probably maybe not Darfield, but Kewee possibly that way. That's pretty much where I'm sitting. So, yep, I'll close up the presentation. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Nick. Any questions from councillors in relation to Nick's presentation? Lan, councillor Lan Farm.
Yeah, Kia ora, thanks for your submission. We had a, another submitter suggesting, I think it was Generation Zero. That especially with total mobility cards, we extend the free option to their support people as well. I was just wondering if you had any comment around that in terms of your own knowledge with the community.
Yes, I believe it will be a very good thing to do to extend it, so that, so that supporters and carers can use the total mobility scheme as well.
Cool. Thank you for that.
Thanks, Lan. And Nick, thank you very much for your presentation, Nick. It's been really clear. And like, I think, you know, you're, thank you so much too for your work as an advocate around public transport over the years. And you've certainly alerted us to some need for public transport for some of those rural areas that you referred to too, coming into town. So thanks so much, Nick. It's very nice to see you again.
Thank you. Thanks for your time. Enjoy the rest of your day.
So I see Rebecca is here. Hello, Rebecca. Nice to see you. Thanks for your presentation. So you have up, we've up to 10 minutes to hear you. Besides, if you give us a summary of what you have to say, we can ask you some questions. That would be really great.
Kia ora, thank you for having me. And I, yeah, my main interest is in how we can change social norms so that sustainable forms of transport are more the, the usual way of business for people in, in Christchurch and Canterbury. I have held a driver's licence for many, many years, but last year, lost my licence for medical reasons. And I was already a keen cyclist and bus user, but I was really struck by how much car use is the norm. And being an individual in your own vehicle is the norm here. From things like every single time I go to the doctor, they say, please wait in the car park, call us, we'll tell you when we can come in or we'll send somebody out. And, you know, nurses getting extremely anxious about COVID testing my children in the open instead of in a car. I don't know what difference it makes, but it's just, it's so normal for everybody to be in their own car. And I think any moves we can make to change that are fantastic. So I see that option one, where all under 25s have basically no financial barrier to using buses. Potentially, you know, makes a whole generation of people who thinks it's, who think it's completely normal to catch a bus. As opposed to a lot of adults at present who are horrified by the idea of catching a bus and say, oh, I'll give you a ride, don't take the bus. It's like, well, I'm happy taking the bus, it's all good. So yeah, I, I, I think it's a really strategic move from that perspective. And I think any other actions that could be taken with a climate levy that would likewise create social norms around sustainable behaviour would be a really worthwhile investment. I'm quite a fan of Doug McKenzie Moore. I don't know if you've come across his work, but he's done a lot of research and found that sadly, telling people about the state of the climate or the whys and reasoning around a lot of behavioural changes are totally ineffective. Information doesn't make the difference. What we need to do is take away barriers, create better incentives and, and influence people. So that the, yeah, I, I think particularly for that under 25 cohort, if they see their peers, people they relate to and respect all using buses. That actually, you know, has a knock on effect and, and helps, as I say, make that social norm. Alongside that, I have discussed online with my neighbourhood, sort of, I'm in Shirley, but Richmond, Avenside, Dallington area have quite a a busy Facebook group and just, yeah, I encouraged people to submit. And a lot of the feedback was that for those who do have kids, do have low incomes, it will make a difference. The, the option one fear structure. And probably those who didn't see money as a barrier for them, they felt that their, their time, the, the lack of time they have available to catch buses was the biggest issue for them. So I think, I know lots of work goes into trying to find the best, most effective bus routes, but that clearly is still a priority. Yeah. I hope that makes some sense.
Makes lots of sense. Thank you, Rebecca. Any questions, councillors? Rebecca, oh, Lan Does, yes, councillor Lan Farm and councillor and Chair Jenny Hui has too. You'd like to go first?
Yeah, really appreciate your submission and you being here today. My question was just around in the climate levy section of your submission, you talk about cheap, inefficient communications, not costly campaigns. And I think we'd all prefer the cheap, efficient communications that are actually effective. And you mentioned how important that behaviour change aspect is. But do you have any like further thoughts or advice for us about what you think might be effective? Maybe what you might have heard from your community around that?
I think, I think, I think social media is quite key. And I, yeah, I'd really, really encourage anyone who hasn't looked at it to have a look at Doug McKenzie Moore's work around community-based social marketing. And he has some great tools for evaluating different options and their potential effectiveness and cost effectiveness. And one of the, the approaches that he really highlights is having been very effective in many communities is actually identifying the key influences, you know, not, not necessarily Kim Kardashian, but the people within communities who kind of everybody knows, everybody respects. If they speak up about a topic or they adopt a particular behaviour, others will notice. And I think that has to be quite a local level initiative, but I think figuring out who, who our community level sort of influential community members are would be a really awesome strategy.
Thanks for those thoughts.
Thanks, Rebecca. And Jenny?
Oh, so actually I had the, I wanted the same information that you've given Lan. So thank you very much. I think it's really valuable and something we need to be exploring. So thanks very much for coming in today.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rebecca. It was a very good presentation and certainly alerted us to a lot of key issues. You've presented it very well, Jenny. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think councillor Dave Evans is our next speaker. Dave is, Dave's submission is in our supplementary report, because Dave was originally going to present yesterday, I think. But anyway, it's, it should be though on, should be as, as part of our supplementary report that we received. I'm just hoping councillors can find that. But Dave, we did, we did get this supplementary report very clearly from, or today it would be a supplementary, it was in, would have been in. We've seen it previously too. So if you'd like to just talk with us, you've got, say, up to 10 minutes. If you have some time for questions too, will be really good, Dave.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to reinforce a few of the points I made in my submission. And fundamentally, what's behind it is concern about the climate and ecological crises that are already upon us. As was made clear by the recent IPCC report, which said that rapid and deep and in most cases, immediate emissions reductions are needed in all sectors. And with transport emissions being the second biggest sector of emissions in Canterbury, I suspect that the biggest factor in that is low occupancy car travel. And I wonder how we can get people out of their fossil fuel powered cars and into shared public transport. That's a massive culture change, which is a difficult challenge. But making it cheaper to travel by public transport should contribute to that culture change. And then maybe it's easier with younger people who are not yet private car owners. And so making public transport fare free for them will make it less likely that they'll be, likely that they'll be able to get their parents to drive them to their destination or lend them a car. And of course, also the fare free option should also be extended to some of those people least able to pay the total mobility and community services cardholders. So I hope that option one will be implemented and that this leads to increased patronage of the bus service, which in turn would permit improvements to the service, improvements especially to service frequency and hours of operation. Because I suspect that there are shift workers who would use public transport more if there were buses started earlier in the morning and ran later at night. Or there were a better network that went more directly to some locations. At the current levels of patronage, the extension of hours is unlikely to happen, but it's a chicken and egg situation. And the workers can't start using a service if it's not yet running. So at some stage, we'll have to push the boat out and anticipate demand and implement services first. Over time, I'd also like to see some technological improvements to the fare gathering structure. Bearing in mind that if public transport was fare free, then there would be no fare gathering costs. Assuming that's not going to happen immediately, one relatively simple change would be to somehow link the cards of the members of a family. So that a maximum family fare could be applied, because I've heard several times how the cost of a whole family travelling by bus together is so high that using the family car instead is a no brainer. I've also heard people say that Christchurch public transport is too extensive and maybe that's because of the zone based fare structure, where travelling a few stops costs as much as travelling across the whole city. While fewer zones makes the fare charging simpler, it makes it harder to match the cost of the actual distance travelled to the fare. Other major cities in Aotearoa, New Zealand require tagging off public transport as well as on. And that's more complicated and requires more equipment, but makes it easier to charge a fare that is proportional to the distance travelled. It would also remove the seeming loophole that allows me to travel from my home in Waltham to the airport, meet somebody and then back home all for $2.65 and at half fares, that's only $1.30. That's a provider that I can do it in a couple of hours, which is quite doable. Tagging on and tagging off would also make it possible to have a fare free zone for journeys within the four avenues. And, and in a way, a way to restore the sorely missed city council free century, central city loop service that ran up until the time of the earthquakes. And maybe even the city council would help fund that. Ultimately, ultimately, I'd like to see the revolutionary on-demand public transport trial in Timaru extended to Christchurch as well. At first, it could operate at times of low network utilisation, so that there are less almost empty buses driving around late at night. On-demand services could also provide a better service for passengers when operating at times when scheduled services are infrequently, infrequent, especially if passengers have to make transfers to reach their destination. Moving on to the question of the proposed climate level levy, not surprisingly, I do support the imposition of a levy. And as for the use of the levy, I'd like it to be primarily used for incentivising the reduction of emissions. For example, helping to fund public transport improvements. As was stated in the IPCC report, we have to urgently reduce emissions. So we should not spend the majority of the climate levy on climate change adaptation. Given the way the frequency and severity of extreme climatic events is increasing. If we don't work to reduce emissions, then any budget for adaptation will quickly be overwhelmed. Some of the run funds raised through a levy should be spent to increase the reach of the It's Time Canterbury project. This is an admirable initiative, but I don't think it has yet achieved the cut through that we need to raise public awareness of the crises that are facing us. And even big contribution in transport to the carbon emissions in Canterbury is methane emissions from intensive livestock farming. I'd like to see some of the funds raised through a climate levies spent on helping farmers reduce methane emissions from their farming operations. And also to reduce or stop the application of artificial fertiliser. I don't know how this would fit in with ECAN's usual operations, but perhaps ECAN could help farmers with measurement and monitoring operations or research into optimised farming practices. If there is a climate levy, I expect it's important that, I think it's important that the wealthier members of community pay proportionally more for it. It's well substantiated that those with the greatest wealth are responsible for the bulk of emissions as they have travelled the most and and have consumed the most goods. So it's only fair that they bear the cost of, of mitigating future emissions and paying for adaptation to climate changes caused by their historical emissions. So thank you for the opportunity to speak to my submission.
Thank you very much, Dave, for a very wide, wide ranging submission. Any questions for Dave, councillors? Although I saw one before, but yeah, Dave, look, you, it's certainly been wide ranging and you've covered a lot, a lot of really important points for us. And, and including, yeah, including your suggestions around the climate, climate change levy and just, and your knowledge around public transport altogether. So it's been very helpful hearing such an excellent presentation, Dave. Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome. Bye.
Thank you.
Is Helene, is Helene available?
Helene is here. Just to speak for her to come online.
Okay, Helene, could you, can we, can we hear from you?
Yes, can you hear me now?
We can hear you. Would you like to use your camera too? Or would you like us to?
Yes, yes, but it doesn't seem to be working. Wait, is that? I think it might be on now. It says cameras off.
It's coming. We can certainly hear you and now we can see you, yeah. If you could just.
Okay, you can't see me. Okay.
We can just see the top of your head. So somehow if we can, now that's good. That's great, Helene.
Yeah.
Really nice to see you. So there's 10 minutes, Helene. Including, but that would include some time for questions. So if you keep your key points, because we'd like to talk with you too.
Okay, thank you. This afternoon, I'm speaking for the Age Friendly Spraden Kashmir Committee. The committee was established by the Spraden Kashmir Community Board in 2018. And we're tasked with developing an age-friendly plan for the older adults in our community. In the communities, in the committee's approach to developing our plans, we have adopted the World Health Organisation's framework of eight essential features or domains to be considered in order to achieve a productive and socially healthy life for older adults. Our submission today focuses on two of those domains, that of transportation. Our submission today focuses on two of those domains, that of transportation and social participation. Is a critical factor in supporting social participation. And it goes a long way in addressing and relieving loneliness and social isolation, which are two common issues for older adults in our community. Our committee's overall transportation goal is that, and I quote, "Everyone in Sprayden Kashmir over the age of 65 years has accessible and affordable transport options to enable their social and economic participation." For older adults, a bus system is more than just being able to go from one place to another and return again. It's a ticket to cultural and social activities, to accessing supermarkets, health services, libraries, recreation, entertainment, religious events, friendships and family. An accessible bus system reduces isolation and promotes emotional wellbeing. For many older adults, public transportation is a necessity. It is not simply an option. In New Zealand, the number of older adults is expected to double in the next 20 years. And as we see the proportion of older adults growing within our community, it is our responsibility to serve them with dignity. To the Age Friendly Committee, it is unfair when people are excluded from participating in society as fully as they can or as they choose to do, only because they might not fit into the current design of public transportation services. For this reason, we decided to make the following four submission proposals to the Environment Canterbury's annual draft plan. Our first proposal is to have the travel limits on the super gold card extended at a minimum to 4:30pm or better, and which is our preferred option, to have the limits removed entirely. Currently, free bus travel by super gold card users is only available at off peak times ending at 3pm. Our committee welcomes ECAN's proposals to support students, the under 25s, people with disabilities under the total mobility care and people needing the community services card and providing broad access to transportation. However, it was very disappointing that the draft annual plan contained no specific proposals to improve the transport needs of older people. We agree with the reasoning that currently identifies the transport needs of students under 25s, people with disabilities and indigent members of our society. But at the same time, we strongly believe that this same approach to social fairness should be extended to older adults. Making bus transportation freely available for more hours to older adults would allow them to participate more fully in social...
Thank you, frozen there. We just repeat that last line, Helene, we just... It's the camera stopped there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
Okay, I'm just... Is it better now?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay. Okay, making bus transportation freely available for more hours to older adults would allow them to participate more fully in society with the benefit of increasing socialisation and reducing isolation. But it would also benefit the community. With longer available hours, it would increase the opportunities for older people to engage in active volunteering, which would benefit the community as a whole. It would also have a positive economic impact on the rejuvenation of the city centre by making it easier and be a more attractive destination to go to enjoy the amenities of the city, shopping, dining, movies and theatre events. It would also give a much needed boost to local retailers who would certainly welcome increased patronage. When more older adults are travelling by bus, there would be a positive environmental effect of lower gas emissions and an ease of traffic on our roads. Our second proposal is to reinstate some bus routes that were eliminated in the 2012 review, bus review, particularly those routes to hospitals and amenities where older adults frequent. Our third proposal is to reinstate the hill suburb bus routes. For older adults living on hills and without cars, the loss of hill bus service may result in significant difficulty in accessing supermarkets, health services, libraries, recreation and a loss of connection to religious, cultural and other social activities. Moreover, the loss of hill bus routes can create a barrier for family and friends who are themselves dependent on public transport and being able to visit older adults living on hill properties, which can affect their emotional wellbeing. Our fourth and last proposal is to reduce the minimum top up amounts on bus cards. Now, this is not a change in fare amounts, but it would simply make it more affordable for older adults on limited incomes to pay their bus fare. And although a proposed for a phone app is under consideration, allowing automated car top... allowing automated car top ups, these technology advances are not always possible for older adults. And finally, there's an issue in the older adult community that is not often talked about. It's known as being asset rich and income poor. These are the hidden poor, who may be living in nice houses, paid for over perhaps a half a lifetime of mortgages and taxes and are now on limited incomes, some struggling to pay high rates and rising inflation. For these people, extended free bus usage is critical. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Helene, for a really clear presentation. So I'm sure there'll be some questions unless councillor Southwood has a question. It says Grant Edge, Annie and Mackenzie, right, in that order.
Yeah, Kiona, thank you, Helene, for the presentation. I just wanted to check that, because my understanding of community service card is that superannuants can, if they're on low income, will receive a commu or can apply for a community service card. And so therefore, that free service would be accessible to those who are both gold card and a community service card. Is that your understanding or do you have any sense of how many older people who are that income poor, but maybe even asset rich, who can still access that community service card? Is that something you're familiar with?
It is something people don't always talk about, but you get a feeling when you do talk to people. And when I was on the community board and going to a lot of meetings, older adult network meetings, you do get the feeling that it is a problem for a lot of people. And many of them might not be aware of what's available to them. Now, because the super gold card, you know, doesn't... Asset testing and it's available to everyone. Yeah, I don't know how many people actually know they can or feel that they should apply for those cards. You know, the special concessions.
Yep, that makes sense. Cool, thank you, thanks, Helen.
Thanks, Vicky. And so councillor Grant Edge.
Thanks, Helena. That was a very enlightening presentation of the issues facing elderly. And as a pensioner, it just makes me aware of a future where that social engineering has placed limitations on our elderly people. So what you're really, just for clarification, what you're really saying is that the notion that the gold card users placing those limitations on timeframes would plog up the bus network outside those, you know, during those peak hours. Is, you're basically saying that's not true? That by allowing no restrictions on timeframe, that the system would not become over plogged at those peak times?
No, what I'm saying that if crowding is a problem, then the same arguments about crowding could be made for restricting students and the under 25s during peak travel hours. The Age Friendly Sprayden Kashmir Committee sees it as a matter of social fairness, which ECAN seems to be approaching with the, you know, the free bus rides to the under 25s and to the students. And we would like that same social fairness to be applied to older adults.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Helene. And Celsia and Mackenzie.
Yeah, thanks, Helene. And I think it's a great job you're doing looking after people like me. So I appreciate all your efforts. So I don't live in your area. You raised an interesting point, I'd just like to ask a question in clarity on, really, or clarity of your opinion about the asset rich, income poor. So all these options we're putting forward for the bus, for changes in public transport offering, come with a substantial cost to rate them. So have you done the balancing between the increase in cost of rates and the benefits that the people you represent would get, should we be able to extend the free bus, you know, the cost of extending the bus service, we might be able to provide to your constituents on a free basis?
Right, now, as a committee, we are not in the position to do any kind of research or calculation that would come up with, actually with reliable information. We're just, you know, a committee that's working. But my point again is that if the cost that the council is agreeing to cover for students and for under 25s, then in the sense of social fairness, older adults should also be entitled to that. And it's just extending the hours. And I think the economic benefit to the city would make up for that. Because older adults, if you have to be on the bus by three o'clock, then you're not going to attend movies as easily or you're not going to go out for a longer meal. So really, by extending the hours, you're giving people more of an opportunity to spend money in the CBD.
Great, thanks, Helene, good answer.
Thanks, and thank you very much, Helene, for your presentation, as people have indicated. It was really clear and it's really good to hear such an eloquent and clear presentation on behalf of older people. And I think your experience in being in the, working as being an advocate for the community has certainly come through today. You made some very good points and we will take your points into account when we have our deliberations and we'll discuss those with staff too. So thank you very much for your time and your excellent presentation, Helene.
Okay, and thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak today.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Helene, bye.
Bye.
I think staff have just let me know that, I think Jonathan Riddiford might be...
He's here. Yeah, so I got the day wrong, apologies.
That's okay, we've got time to, he and I, up to 10 minutes altogether, Jonathan, and...
That's fine. I, with Vicky and the Students' Association, brought this idea to you last year. And so I'm going to concentrate on the points that matter to the island area. Of course, we've got to get people getting out of cars and parking cars near the area. At the moment, it costs nearly $1,000 a year for a student to park his car or her car. So we're also going to lose a lot of car park space because of the new bike lane going through, continuing through Ireland and onto the airport. And there's over 250 car parks going on there. So the thing is, putting my MBA hat on, we've got to find the motivation factor of people getting on buses. And what is the cause? Is money the major issue? We have an issue in the area at the moment with Villa Maria and buses and car parking. And the girls from Villa Maria, who they don't like getting on because of... They go into town at the weekend because of the danger of the area, the centre, over the road from here. So we had to sit down with the city council and sort that out. Other reasons we've been told is, one, the timetable and the directions of where they're going. Also, for the outsider students, we've got over 50% of our students live outside, are 7.5 kilometres from the island campus. But we also have, Villa has grown from just over 400 to 800 students recently. And another major centre, it's the biggest store in the South Island with Burnside, and a massive amount of car parking there. So we've got to get people to regard bus transport as the major form of moving. The city and the area around Christchurch is changing. A former city councillor has announced already, has had two applications, one for 2,000 and one for 800 sections, one in Ia Hocka and two in Selwyn. This, a lot of these people will be sending their children to university. That's, and so we've got to work out that the areas from round the Wood End area, Randiora and Prebleton and Lincoln, students will be coming into Ara or going out to Lincoln and coming to UC. So we have massive problems there. Also for residents there, Christchurch is going to have probably six major, well, let's call them entertainment centres built in the next three years. There's going to be the physical activity centre, there's going to be the stadium, there's going to be the area around the Court Theatre and the two major religious centres in Christchurch, the Catholic Cathedral and the Anglican Cathedral, should be finished in three years. And also we have the convention centre. So a lot of our people will be going and using those and we've got to make it easier for them to do. There is also the cost factor of running a car, not only the car parking, but it looks like it's going to be in excess of $3 a litre within the next year. And that is me.
Thanks very much, Jonathan. And just from my notes, I understand you were supporting option, the bus option one, yes?
Yeah, we talked to the university to call it Flaherty, is the thing, and they are supporting option one.
Thank you very much. I'm not sure if there's questions. I was just going to comment, look, I'm really glad you made this presentation, Jonathan. I think the congestion around the area you're referring to has been contentious for many years and has only got worse. Hopefully, things like the bike lanes, the bike lanes will, along Island Road, the area there will assist. But also, we join you in wanting to make sure we have more patronage on buses so we have a better bus service too.
Can I just comment on that? They've done research around the university and last year, nearly 30 bikes were stolen. And there is a Long Island road, there's only about 250 bikes a day going up and down there. Also, we were relying on car parking from Dubdell Campus, but the university has leased out a vast majority of this to an entertainment centre and they're going to have up to 400 people working there and they need car parks.
Thank you very much for making those points, Jonathan. And thank you for your time and coming and talking to us today. And I doubt it worked out, thank you. So is Lennon Cameron with us yet? I'm not sure if...
Oh, Lennon hasn't arrived.
He hasn't arrived, but I think I...
Andrea Davis is next.
Thanks. So Andrea, I saw you two, yeah.
Hello.
Hi, Andrea.
Can you hear me?
We can. So we've got up to 10 minutes, Andrea. And if you leave us some time for questions, that will be great too.
Yes, I'd just like to say, I grew up in a different country, in the New York metropolitan area. I take the bus all the time. But none of, I don't know how many of you actually take the bus. But I don't think very many Kiwis, it's just not in your DNA. It's because we've designed the cities to be car dependent. So we don't really know any other way. So making it free is the number one thing. So making it free is the number one thing, and just having it convenient. I live in Sumner, so I'm on a great route, it's every ten minutes, but I did stay in Kashmir at a friend's once, and I could not get the bus to the city, even though it was only ten minutes. There just aren't any buses, and it was raining, so I ended up driving to the city, to Kashmir. You know, it was just, anyway, so that's, that on the bus. It's wonderful what you're doing, but I really, I think you'd need an advertising campaign or something, because Kiwis see freedom as the car is freedom, but now, in the city, particularly in Christchurch, you're not free, you're sitting in traffic and there's nowhere to park, and that's not freedom anymore. So you kind of need to just spin it on its head and let them know, you will be free if you get on the bus and chat with your neighbour, sort of, I don't know. Anyway, the other thing is the flooding in South Canterbury, and I believe that was the other issue, and the rates going to repair roads and bridges, wonderful. I'm a practising landscape architect and did a bunch of research on New Orleans for my masters. And in, I mean, I think we all have to get our heads around the fact that these rivers, if we build stop banks, people will want to put assets on the other side of the stop bank. So do we just accept the river will always flood? So repair the bridges and the roads, yes, but I'm against stop banks signalling to landowners, okay, now it's okay to put more assets here, and we real, and we're doing it in Christchurch too. So it's like living with water, this is, this is what New Orleans has decided they have to do, and we do too, green infrastructure and all that. Anyway, that's me.
My grandchildren were making quite a lot of noise before, I apologise for that, they quietened off. Look, thanks for your presentation, Andrea. I thought too, your, your suggestion for a climate change sort of project, or a future one, around having swales built, where there's new streets or street or channels and curves have been reconditioned or changed, that that was a really good idea. So thank you for making innovative suggestions like that.
Yeah, the designing, I think designing, so what we've done is, we've designed a city that's car dependent, and also the runoff from these roofs and roads, at least in Halswell, they're doing, you know, riparian planting around streams and things, but in the past, we definitely designed ourselves into a bit of a hole, and we didn't realise that, you know, twenty years ago, we didn't know what we know now, and we didn't think there was a problem, but now we do. So it's tricky, we can design our way out of it, but it needs to be in the building code and bylaws that people cannot just, you know, a two hundred square metre roof, if you can get away with a one hundred square metre roof and make it green, means zero discharge for most rain events. Anyway, Melbourne's done, Melbourne's done a lot of work, and we should look to Australia because Australia, you know, they have the same problem. They've got this, you know, the flooding and getting Australians out of cars. I mean, I know in cities, it's, and Melbourne's got a great system. So we should kind of just copy what Australia's done, in a way.
We can learn something from you. We certainly learned a lot from you today too. And so, look, thank you very much, Andrea, for.
Thank you.
It's been, it's been very helpful for our consideration.
Ian's got a question, Phil.
Sorry, I missed that?
Ian's got a.
Oh, Ian, sorry, I didn't see your hand, Ian.
That's all right, Phil, I just sort of ignoring you, that's okay. Andrea, just clarity, I thought in New Orleans, they'd rebuilt all the levees, in fact, improved the levees. Are you suggesting they're taking them all down and allowing New Orleans to?
So what they did, they did have to build the outer ones, the Corps of Marines engineers did those, but in the city, what they did was, they decided that they needed to reintroduce water into their landscape, which actually, the whole city's built on a peat, like a bog peat, and the whole thing shrunk. So actually, the sea level rises, it went down, the city was lower, and then they hydrated that peat soil again. The city gained a few more inches, and they've also done all these bio swales on the side of each road. When it rains, it goes into the gardens, into the, into a tank where they store water, they hang on to that water, and when it's, when they have time to release it, or they need it somewhere, they then release it. So in, the same thing in Melbourne, like a lot of the universities and the bigger fields, they all have storage tanks, like big swimming pools under them. So when it rains, it goes into these storage tanks, and then, a week later, when it's dry again, they can start releasing it into the Yarra. So it's this, you know, it's always water, there's never enough, there's too much, or it's dirty, you know? So we either have a drought or we have too much water. I mean, so being able to hold water for when we need it, that's why we should all be really catching our rainwater, particularly in Christchurch. I don't really like putting chlorine on my plants, but, you know, if we could all have our rainwater and get a little bit of a discount from the council for not discharging storm water, because billions and billions and billions of dollars are spent on this storm water from residences. So there's so many, I mean, just, I think you just Google Melbourne and Google living with water in New Orleans, and you'll see some beautiful examples.
Thanks very much, Andrea, that we will, that they're, they are really good examples that you've given us, and thank you very much for coming along and talking with us. I think we're through on our time.
Thank you for your work, thank you.
Thank you.
You're doing a good job, thanks, bye.
That's nice of you. So councillors, I think staff have indicated that Charlie Corkery might be here, and I see Fergus, you're here too, and although I think you were a wee bit later, we might be able to take you early if you just hang fire with us. So I'm just checking too, though, that Charlie Corkery is with us.
Charlie has not arrived.
Oh, he's not here yet? Okay, so you might be next up then, Fergus. Fergus, you're muted, can you just unmute?
Have I done that now?
Yes, you have, we can hear you loud and clear.
Oops.
I'm just going to check with staff, Fergus, what time, what, sorry, what page your submission is on, we have it here, but I'm just wanting to make sure staff.
Page sixty-five of the agenda.
Thanks for that, okay, so councillors, page sixty-five, and now of our agenda, and over to you now, Fergus.
Thank you, and good afternoon. This is the, the first time that I've done anything like this. I've always voted at general and local body elections. Up until recently, I've always had a job and either been self-employed or employed, and I've always just gone with the flow. Up until recently, when bad health and the Covid stuff arrived, that gave me plenty of time to sit at home all day and a fair bit of the night, and just wondering what I can do to change the situation that I found myself in. So that's why I've asked to talk to the councillors about the draft annual plan. Although I've retired, I still drive a school bus, which enables me to talk to the people that drive and manage the My Way buses in Timorou. The main reason for this service is being, that this service is being trialled, is to help reduce the use of fossil fuel vehicles, less road congestion, and to save the planet. The people of Timorou don't have far to go to their work, or their shops, or whoever the My Way might be able to take them, compared to the people in the outlying towns like Tamooka, Pleasance Point, Geraldine, and Fairleigh, who also travel to Timorou to work and to the shops. If the My Way service is to be extended, then these towns should be included. The Timorou service is almost running to capacity. The fear reduction that the government recently announced hasn't been implemented because it may overwhelm the system and give the customers a bad experience. The My Way is starting to be accepted, so why not include places like Pleasance Point or Geraldine for a trial? But when you attempt to fix one problem, you often create another, and that, I think, is what will happen. The government and the car manufacturers are pushing for everyone to have an EV. The reason for this is obvious. So if the councillors, like you, own an EV, would you leave it at home and go to work to the office in a My Way bus? I don't think so. So EVs will become more popular. And by doing that, you're still going to be causing congestion on the roads, so we still have a problem. On increasing our rates or imposing a levy, which really is the same thing, to accelerate the action in response to climate change, will be a waste of taxpayers' funds. I think we all acknowledge that the climate change is happening. So any levies taken from the ratepayers should be used to find ways of how we are going to live with the changing climate. Even if we all drove EVs and our dairy cow numbers were hard, the world climate is still going to change. So we'll be, we should be thinking about a Plan B or a Plan C, so that the future citizens will be able to live with it. How are we going to recover from the recent flooding that impacted our roads and bridges, et cetera? That's easy, that's easy. The government seem hell-bent on free waters, so the problem's going to become theirs. I don't think so. The Ashburton Bridge is well past its use-by date, it should be replaced sooner rather than later. The next hundred-year flood may only be a week or so away, but I know that bridge is not yours to replace, but are you putting pressure on those whose responsibility it is? We pay two thousand dollars a year for our rates in Winchester on a quarter acre, two hundred and twenty-five to regional council. We have no sewage, no storm water, and no bus service, and you expect us to pay an increases that you are imposing? We are living off the superann, and I'm not ashamed to tell you that we don't have many savings, so how are we going to keep paying you more and more just because you need it? When I see so much waste of ratepayers' money, it does concern me. Good money is being spent on things that don't seem to warrant it. After a lifetime of working, how are we going to manage? It doesn't seem fair. I would like to finish, I'd like to finish with a little thought. Charlie Brown and Peanuts are sitting under a tree. Peanut said to Charlie Brown, do fairy tales start with "once upon a time"? And Charlie Brown says, no, some start with, "when I get elected, I will promise." So there we are. And I was just thinking what that previous speaker was talking to me about, or talking to everybody about, water storage. I've been harping on and to the local Timorou council and the other council that we lived in, about every house and property should have a storage water tank that comes off the roof, and why that's not implemented here is beyond belief. All other countries, or not all other countries, a lot of other countries do have it, and if it works for them, why is it not working for us? We need to store the energy and the water that we're getting, don't dip it down the drain. Thank you.
Thank you, Fergus, very much. There's a question for you from councillor Elizabeth Mackenzie.
Hi, Fergus.
Hello.
Excellent, excellent submission. I've also been harping on to MDC about rainwater collection, and they are going to do a bit about that. But, yeah, just a question about the bus, you said you drive a school bus?
That's right.
I guess what I wondered was, and I've sort of been asking a few other people about this, is there any potential to have a sort of mixed model where some school buses are used off-peak for rural bus service, community, and perhaps just a couple of My Way-type buses added on to sort of have a, like what I would call a mixed model? Would you know, as a school bus driver, is there time off-peak for school buses to be able to be used as a community service, bus service?
Yeah, well, I drive a Richie's bus in Geraldine, taking, picking up kids to take to Geraldine High and Geraldine Primary School. I leave home at quarter to eight in the morning. There's just on thirty kids enrolled in my bus, and I get to the school about, just after eight-thirty, so the buses are parked up at quarter to nine. There's thirteen of them, I think, in Geraldine, and round about Geraldine, that are parked up until three o'clock in the afternoon again, before they spend another hour and a half or taking the kids home. So, yeah, the buses are parked up for a long time during the day.
So it could potentially be used, potentially?
Well, yes, yeah. I would think so. Of course, that would take a lot of negotiating, yes.
Yeah, yeah, that's something, yeah, yeah.
But it does seem, when you think about it, it does seem a great resource, sitting idle for a fair part of the day.
Yeah, yeah. All right, thank you very much.
I understand that the My Ways is doing pretty well in Timorou, but I also have a couple of daughters who have just not long left school and started work, and in Timorou, they don't have far to go, but they, when I tried to encourage them to try the My Ways, oh, no, no, much easier to take the car when I want it than when I want to come home, and I might want to pick up some groceries. So it's a mindset, we've been doing this for a long, long time, and how do we get out of that habit? It's going to be a battle.
Thank you, thank you, Fergus, you've made your points really well, and I think at the beginning of this, you said, look, you hadn't done it, hadn't talked to a councillor before, but you've come across as an expert, and with all of your experience and knowledge, your practical knowledge too, with, starting with bus driving, that's been very helpful, Fergus. You've given us lots of good ideas and about how we should do things, and you might be aware that the, yes, the My Way trial in Timorou has gone very well, it's still being extended, the trial, but so the results have been very, very good, and we take on board your, your suggestion about extending it in the, in the South Canterbury area. So, look, thank you very much for coming and talking with us, Fergus, I think we're through with our time now, but we certainly appreciate your thoughts, and we'll take all of your suggestions into consideration as we're having our discussions about our annual plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much for taking the time to listen to me, bye.
Thank you, bye.
So councillors, staff have indicated that in fact, there are no more submitters in this, in the session. I think Lan's got a question, I don't know, do you want to fire that ahead now, Lan? I know Lan is frozen, with her hand up, that's okay.
Lan, are you frozen?
Yes, have I frozen too?
Hi, sorry, I must have frozen, it didn't look frozen for me, but it must have been frozen for you guys, maybe.
I was just saying, councillors, that we, there are no more submitters waiting for this session, there'll be, there are other submitters, of course, waiting for, will be there for the next session at five o'clock, which councillor Ian Mackenzie is going to chair that session. So I think we're through today, but look, if any submitters are still there, thank you so much for your submissions during the session. I've really, and I'm sure all of us as councillors have really appreciated the significant contribution each of you as submitters has made, and thank you for councillors for your participation and involvement too.
Welcome to the resumption of the annual plan hearings. My name is councillor Ian Mackenzie, and I'll be chairing this session. We'll begin with the, with the draft annual plan 2023 hearing, session three, page sixty, we're going to list those who present their submissions for session three, and just note that Fergus Gregory has already presented. And I see we have Diane Dunwood and Kevin Moore both around, so Diane, your submission is page sixty-one, response. So Diane, your submission is page 61, response 4077139. I invite you to present. We have 10 minutes. And what I suggest is you give us a synopsis of the main issues you just want to highlight. We've taken your submission as being read by the councillors. Give us maybe a five-minute synopsis of your submission, and that allows time for questions. So over to you, Diane. Diane? Diane?
Ian, one option might be to get someone to help Diane offline and go with Kevin.
Yeah, just about, thanks, Craig, I was just about to do that. Vivian, could you or somebody help Diane get her volume working? And in the meantime, Kevin, if you're ready to go, we could run with you.
Right, yeah, no, I had unmuted it, but someone got back again. Right.
Kevin, the same rules, we have 10 minutes.
Well, we're a little bit early. Is there somebody else happening or you want to start me now?
Yeah, we'd like to start you now because Diane is having trouble with her computer. But if you could do your 10 minutes now, please. So and what I propose is five minutes as a summary of your submission and then allows five minutes for questioning.
Well, yes, look, good afternoon. But I can't do a summary of my submission because you've got the submission. I included the Piranui District Council, which I presented to them last year, and pointed out to those people that there was a tsunami coming straight at them. And this was their very last warning to do anything about it. And same rule here, this 10 minutes, which is absolutely ridiculous for matters which take at least two hours, preferably four hours, to discuss. So I actually wrote an email this morning to Christina. And what I wrote was that when I wrote my recent report to ECAN, I pointed out that to allocate 10 minutes to wind-raging matters that require at least two hours, preferably four to discuss, was utterly ridiculous. That is particularly true now that the economic-financial system is in faster meltdown than when I wrote the report. As a direct consequence of government and councils ignoring the very issues I and others have repeatedly highlighted as being crucial to our very survival.
Okay, Kevin.
At the time I wrote that commentary, I was unaware that there would be a video link. So this is completely ridiculous to try and talk about it in five minutes. But I will say this, because this is crucial. You can ignore reality, but you cannot ignore the consequences of ignoring reality. Now, that was a quote from Dr Colin Campbell, the founder of ASPO, for which I was a member. It's actually now defunct because we're past peak oil and we're on the way down. Now, when I've questioned ECAN about this, I went through the whole organisation, nobody in the organisation could give me any answers. Went right the way through the whole organisation, as far as the CEO, nobody had any answers on any of the simplest of questions, which tells me that the organisation is completely dysfunctional. We know that this so-called plan is total nonsense and it is completely unscientific, has no basis whatsoever. Nothing in the plan can be justified. Now, I've been doing this for 20 years and it's a standard policy to ignore an expert. Now, I am a leading expert on all of this stuff, probably the best in New Zealand. What's really interesting for me is I had a phone call from the top biologist in New Zealand. He said to me, this is just over a year ago, "What do you think about this COVID vaccine?" I said, "It's not a vaccine." "No," he said, "absolutely, would you have it?" I said, "No way, I'm not having that in me." And now we know that it's not a vaccine, it's dangerous, very dangerous. And overseas, we're seeing now people who have been jabbed, I can't call it a vaccine anymore, people have been jabbed with the Pfizer jab, have a negative consequence in terms of their ability to survive COVID. Minus 292 is the latest figure. But the government and the council are still promoting the COVID scam. So everything, point out here, anybody who believes in infinite growth on a finite planet is mad. And that's what we've got. So that's what I'd like to say to you. Now, I'm ready to answer any questions, but I did coin the term "beached whale syndrome" a number of years ago because whenever I have presented crucial information to survival, and this is the interesting thing, councillors and council officers are quite happy, in fact enthusiastic about destroying their own future. This system is going to crash this year, no question about that, 100% certain. And the things that the council is doing are making the situation far worse for everybody, including councillors. Now, I had discussions with Guy McPherson about when there would be human extinction. He said, within a matter of months, possibly because of the masking effect, I actually debated him on that, we are still headed for human extinction by 2040. And we're talking about here, total nonsense about electric cars. It's all a scam, I'm afraid. Now, I took down the Rod Car Climate Commission report, total nonsense, talking about supplementing the gas supply with hydrogen, which is made from gas. Talking about electric cars, total nonsense because price of lithium, now three times what it was a year ago. Diesel, up 140%. This is the end of the system and you people need to wake up to that fact.
Kevin, can we, can we now, you've used up most of your time, but could we just see if any of the councillors have any questions for you, please? Elizabeth?
Yep, hi, Kevin. Yeah, I've got a question for you. So you've talked quite a bit, and I agree with most of what you say, actually. You've talked quite a lot about the problems that we're facing.
No, this was a predicament, right?
Can you let me ask my question, please? So if you were in my position as a regional councillor, what would your top two priorities be in terms of where we're facing basically like an abrupt...
I've already said it. One is preventing abrupt climate change, which we're not doing anything at all about. So the CO2 level is now 190 above the long-term average and going up. New Zealand's emissions are up 30 or 40% from the time that the Kyoto Protocol was implemented. In other words, we're getting worse faster. There is one issue now, and that's basically food and water. And the council is doing zilch about that. The only sensible response is power down and permaculture. Well, councils are not interested in that. Government's not interested in that because there's no profit for banks and corporations. But that's the only possibility. You've got to get out there, deep-haven areas which are covered in concrete and asphalt and get planting trees, fruit trees and vegetable gardens. That's the only...
So you're saying degrowth, energy reduction.
We're in degrowth now and we've got mad people in the economics sector saying we've got to have growth. Well, growth is the problem.
I agree.
Thank you.
Yeah, all right, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Are there any other questions from councillors? No, I don't think there are. So thank you, Kevin, we've had our 10 minutes. That's, thank you for your presentation.
I am available to assist you if you want further help because I'm an expert in this stuff. I've been doing it and I'm doing it right now. And we've got catastrophe right now. This is not 10 years from now, it's this year. So I hope I get that message through to you.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin. Now, if we could move on to Diane. Are we, we're all ready to go with Diane, are we? Yeah, I think we are. She is on, her submission is on page 61, 4077139. Diane, all yours, please. You just have to press your mute button so we can hear you. Diane, the sound isn't working, so I'm sorry. This is, we can't, we can't hear you unfortunately, so we can't make any head or tail of what you're saying. We have read your submission. Whether... Whether there's a possibility that perhaps, if, having read your submission, if any councillors have got a question, we could perhaps put it up in the chat and then we could perhaps pass that down and we might be able to do a relay of question or answers if there are. Or else perhaps swap with a session for tomorrow when we might be able to get the technology working a bit better.
Yeah, good idea.
Would you be able to come in tomorrow, Diane? You can, you're signalling that's a good solution. That's cool. Look, we'll get the staff to slot you in for a session tomorrow, Diane, and try and sort out technology in the meantime so that we can hear you because your submission makes some interesting points and I think it would be pretty not to be able to hear you. So thank you for that. And I'm sorry about technology. And I'm the worst person sitting in the chair to be able to help you with technology because I'm a troglodyte as well. So thank you for that. Right, so do we have Valerie Campbell online?
There appear to be no more submitters online at the moment, so we can take a break. Or we can just wait for a few moments.
What time was Valerie?
Let's see, Valerie's due at 5:24. We can take a break until then.
Okay. Right, I think it is 5:24 now. So Valerie, if you're, if you're... And look, we have, welcome, thank you for submitting. We have 10 minutes for your session. And I would suggest that you give us a synopsis of the more salient points of your submission in about five minutes and which allows questioning for the councillors for about five minutes, if that's okay.
Yes, that'll be fine.
Starting now.
The first part of my submission, really, was supported option two of the bus changes. I think the incentive to use buses is greatly increased by the idea of reducing the current fares. But I don't agree with the idea of making the buses free because I think you might get a patronage up and then when the charges come on in two years' time, there'll be a big backlash against the buses and it'll be a negative effect. The other thing I have thought about, and I'm not sure if that's in my submission or not, that I think one of the major ways of improving popularity of buses is to have their frequency increased. I know the regular number three, I'm much more ready to go out and use it now that it comes every 10 minutes than I was when it was 20 minutes. It just makes that difference to the speed with which your journey is done. And the other thing that I think is a very helpful way of encouraging workers who work in the CBD out of their cars is to increase the parking fees in the city. And that needs persuading the city council to do that. But that then leaves more parking available for short-term visitors to the city. And that keeps the CBD active and busy. But of course, because the buses are quicker and there are more of them, people will be inclined to also use the bus unless they've got small children with prams and things like that, and then they might prefer a car. I also think the idea of doing away with sections and just having longer journeys, the same price as the shorter ones, simplifies the system and it also means that you're more likely to get people taking longer journeys using the buses. And that, of course, is better for carbon emissions and traffic congestion. So I hope you get going on that. I'm looking forward to the bus system really improving. Another thing that I just very quickly supported was the idea of spending more money on biodiversity. I'm chair of Forests and Birds North Catterie branch, so I naturally think biodiversity is a really critical part of ECAN's work. And I'm also aware that it's more effective and better to preserve what we've got and improve it rather than having to start from scratch. We've done enough starting-from-scratch projects to know there are a lot of work and it takes a long time to get the results. And so I really encourage you to try and work with the, getting the SNA's identified on properties. And I've wondered if one way to help that process, which has always been, in the 90s it was absolutely terrible, would be by incentivising the process a little bit with some kind of rates rebate system or some assistance with fencing off areas through a biodiversity contestable fund, which I know you've got a pretty good one there running anyway. I think those kinds of things might ease the, I can only describe it as irrational anger of the rural community. But again, I think that's an area where good work can be done. The other mantra that I've had, and I know I've given presentations to the council in the last, probably about three or four years ago now, on the war on weeds, which we really need to address strongly if we're going to keep on top of biodiversity and improving our own environment. And I fear that the seeming warmer and drier climate that a lot of Canterbury is now experiencing, I was going to say enjoying, but I thought experience is a better word, with probably warmer winters, summers hotter and drier are going to be a gift to my old favourite bone seed, but also St John's Wort and a host of other weeds that are already here and others that are probably trying, looking forward to this. And so war on weeds, I think, is important and it's really vital. But this is, again, a combined effort between ECAN and the various district councils. I think the really good example of how this works is Wurth and the Apo Waimeka Riri process. And so I think that is one way to try and get on with this. And just the other point that I always try to make whenever I talk to a councillor is that there's five endemic species of birds on our rivers which desperately need the best biodiversity they can get. Nitrate in waters, diminished flows in the rivers and weeds on the riverbeds are just so, that's sort of the final thing that will push them over the edge. And it's really, really important that we should get on with the war on weeds, on water particularly. So they're the main points I'd like to make about your annual plan. And yes, I think I didn't do too badly on the time.
No, no, no time is good. We've got time for a couple of questions if there are any. Look, it appeared that there are no questions, Valerie. I think your submission was well read. Your points, your verbal points have been well made. So thank you for taking time to come to us and give us your opinions on...
Could I just make one last passing comment on that, in that case? Because I'd at some stage very much like to present an idea that I've been laughed at about when I entered the ECAN as a councillor in 1995, is that I really see that there's a possibility of setting up some kind of Water Uses Fund for River Care in which everybody who uses water in Canterbury pays something as a part of their use of the water. And it goes into a trust fund, which can then be used to really put some bigger money into looking after the riverbeds and restoring riparian areas and that kind of thing. I think it's a feasible thing. And I think we could all put something into that idea and we, as we do with buses, and let the birds and fish have gold cards.
Thanks, Valerie.
Thank you very much.
And we appreciate your comments in that area. And to a degree, we are exploring what we might consider innovative ways of doing, of funding such projects. So thank you for your suggestion.
I'd like to make a presentation sometime.
Well, you're welcome.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Right, so the next presenter is Jay Becker. Do we have Jay Becker?
Jay Becker has not come online, councillor Mackenzie. Next up would be the Waimeka Riri Youth Council. I see Ruby's not online either, but I do see Colter Catherine's online. Is Colter perhaps representing that group?
That's Colter, if you're there, could you tell us who you are and who you're representing? Your name is...
Is I youth rope.
Youth, youth rope, okay. Well, they're due to be the last presenter, but if you're here, Colter, or is he expecting other youth rope members?
Kiora Gais.
Are you expecting other people to join you or are you...
Yes, I am. Yep, so I'm waiting on Ruby, my deputy chair. We've got a presentation prepared and... Uh, we, we've got a presentation prepared in which we both have some things to say, so I'd prefer to wait till Ruby's around.
And Jay's not, Jay Becker's not part of your team. I, I know that she's a young, young person, 17-year-old from Rolston.
Uh, Jade, did you say? No, I don't.
No, she's obviously not. No, that's okay. Well, we'll, we'll, we'll give you a couple of minutes for Ruby to turn up and then, if Jay hasn't come online, we'll, what time is, uh, um, now here we are. So Christina Vivian, what time is Jay Becker?
Um, we can adjourn till 5:40 PM.
Okay, yeah. And, and either Ruby will be there or Jay will be there. That'll be cool. Thank you. Right, so what, we, we have 10 minutes. And, uh, the councillors will have all read your submission. So if you could just give us a synopsis of what you think you'd like to emphasise, perhaps over about five minutes. And that'll give us five minutes for questioning from the councillors on issues of clarity. Over to you guys.
Yep, perfect. Um, so Kiora Koto, uh, call Ruby Toku Ngua, as you might have just heard, um, and call Colter Tor Ngua or Toku Hua. Um, we are here on behalf of the Environment Canterbury Youth Ropu. Um, and our submission in this hearing today, uh, Colter, who, um, perhaps is on the screen as well with me, um, is currently our chairperson for the Ropu and I'm the deputy chair. Um, so this year we decided to submit on the public transport, uh, sorry, public transport fares review solely, um, because it was the most engaging for our members and also the youth groups that we were aiming to interact with. Um, we have, as we always hope to have, a good geographical spread all across Canterbury with our members this year. Um, so the submission is coming from a range of perspectives and backgrounds, not just centre City Christchurch, which we're really proud of. Um, and so because of the spread, the Ropu this year are split on their preference for option one or two for the public transport fares, um, review. And this again reinforces, reinforces the fact that youth voice is not always congruent. Um, it is, however, the diversity that makes youth voice vital. Um, and I will now hand over to Colter to reiterate the reasons behind, um, our opinions.
Kiora Ruby, thanks for that. Um, can everybody hear me okay before I begin?
All good.
Cool. Okay, so our reasons for option one, uh, as Ruby already said, half of the Ropu prefers option one. Option one provides an economic incentive to use the bus and will lead to the greatest increase in bus usership. We believe this will bring about a behaviour change in young adults, which has, uh, powerful long-term implications. A future population that makes better use of public transport and reduces reliance on personal vehicles is vital. We feel is vital for sustainability in Ototahie. Adoption of option one will increase public transport usership, which should be followed by increased investment in the service. Uh, as you probably know, of course you know, in the public transport discussion, these two points are often hotly contested. Um, but we believe that an effective approach involves bringing users into the existing system and then upgrading it. Option one accomplishes this. Personal environmental footprints are, uh, too often tied to finance. The EYR sees option one as an efficient means of combating this ever-present challenge as, uh, option one targets price-sensitive groups, um, with the price reductions. Uh, this just makes a lot of sense to us. Um, and yeah, implementing equitable access to public transport and other sustainable infrastructure helps address this environmental justice issue, which is something that is notoriously challenging. Yeah, climate change and associated impacts will undeniably be felt most strongly by the young people who are effectively powerless to affect meaningful change. Um, option one will lead to the most significant emissions reductions, uh, which is particularly important in Christchurch as, uh, our greenhouse gas budget is dominated by transport. We desperately want to see more initiatives that will help enable a zero-carbon society and mitigate environmental degradation. That was for option one. Uh, option two, half of the EYR prefer this option, as Ruby already said. Yeah, in a nutshell, this is, uh, a equality and equity argument. Yeah, option two creates equality among the user base and the EYR feels that a fair, a fair fares scheme is crucial for success. The ratepayers who are funding the fares reductions should see the associated benefits directly. Option two impacts a wider demographic of the population. When drafting the EYR submission, we were shown some data that suggested that the, the, essentially the group that would not be affected, uh, or that would not see any benefit from option one, the 25 to 65 age bracket was, uh, a dominant part of the public transport user base. Since then, we've seen corrected figures, um, courtesy of councillor Southworth, which, yeah, corrected this number from 52% to 38%, so that should be noted. The decision, the submission was written before we had that correction, anyway. Yeah, although this option isn't as transformative as option one, it will still lead to increased public transport usership and therefore emissions reductions. Some of the, uh, other members, uh, feel that this compromise in environmental impact is an acceptable cost to achieve equality within the citizens of Ototahie. Cool, so those, yeah, that's basically a summary of how everybody feels about the two options. I just wanted to take this, uh, moment kind of on behalf of myself and a couple of the other members to extend on our submission and actually, uh, really, uh, ask for something a bit further, and that is, um, a combination of, of the, of option one and two. Yeah, I think the, yeah, the, the split in, in the group really, um, indicates that both options have benefits and we would love to see, um, both options implemented because there are merits in both. And obviously, that's not something that's been put on the table, but that's something that we'd really like to advocate for. I should also disclaim that this, um, isn't something that we've had time to discuss internally. But, uh, yeah, I just thought that since the two options aren't mutually exclusive, I would go ahead and, um, on behalf of the group, advocate for that. That's something that I'd love to see, because, yeah, we'd get the fairness, the equality that option two offers, and we'd also see a greater environmental benefit.
Thanks, Ruby. Perfect. And, uh, and so we could perhaps open to questions now.
Um, sorry. Sorry councillor, and I was just going to say, before we go to questions, um, there was also something that I wanted to add this year with our, um, annual plan submission process, it's been really positive. Um, and we just thought that it might be something to note that, um, over the social media campaigns and things that we did, we got over 7,400 impressions from various young people as well, which I think, um, just reinforces the demand from youth to be a part of this decision-making process and to have a say in the choices that will influence the rest of their lives, pretty much. So, yeah, just thought I'd add that in.
That's very useful intervention, thank you, Ruby. Craig Pauling, can you have a question?
Hi. Kiora Kordua, thanks, Colter, Ruby. Yeah, and that last bit of information's, uh, really awesome to know about as well. Uh, so thanks for that. Um, look, and I know, uh, Colter, you, you've acknowledged that you haven't had time or the group hasn't had time to contemplate the combination option. Um, but it's definitely something that I'm interested in. And I wanted to know if you had any thoughts about how that could work. Is it simply just adding the two together or is it a, is there a way to, um, reduce some of the, is it, you know, is it not 25-year-olds, is it 19-year-olds, is it 21-year-olds or something? And then you do the flat fare. Have you had any thoughts about that?
Um, honestly, at this stage, it's just, well, for me personally, it's just been an acknowledgement of half the Ropu wants this, half the Ropu wants this, and there's no conflict between the two. So essentially, no, it would just be, you know, free fares under 25, over 25, two-dollar flat fare. Yeah, unfortunately, yeah. Um, and that's something, uh, just while I'm on this topic, it, it's sort of a matter to this issue that I've mentioned before, that it would be absolutely great to have, uh, more resources allocated to the Ropu in some way, um, so that we have more time to contemplate these kind of important decisions around the, these kind of times. As we're all very busy, um, we've, we've just been around in the last month, we've had exams and, um, lots of people sick with Covid as well. So, yeah, it's just unfortunately, we really, since the last councillor meeting, we've only even met like once or twice, just for an hour, and it's, yeah, um, really challenging to, to accomplish what we'd like to.
But thanks, Colter. A question from John Tuncle, councillor Sun.
Yeah, thank you, Colter. Uh, could you just clarify for me, um, that the percentage of users aged 25 to 60-something? There were two different figures that, that were in there. And, and, and I guess an extension to that is, um, those folk, are they the folk that we're really targeting? If we are looking for, for mode shift and people taking them out of cars? So just what those percentage figures were again?
Yeah, sure. Um, yeah, so we had, uh, in, in our decision process, we had some data presented, which, um, uh, it was survey data and it sort of indicated that, um, the, that 52% of the bus public transport usership was in the 25 to 65 age bracket. In our submission, we included, uh, a figure with that data. Since then, we, we have spoken in our councillor liaison meeting, um, Vicky Southworth mentioned that this survey actually didn't include under 16, the under 16 age bracket. And then, um, she, uh, yeah, basically corrected that figure, which dropped from 52% of the usership down to 38%. So essentially, I think that 52% number was, uh, kind of making people feel like, hey, this is a really big group of the public transport usership that's not, um, you know, getting their money's worth from this, these changes effectively. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, and, 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 and the statistics which you were looking at clearly were are in your submission, which, as you say, is the age groups of 16 to 17, 18, 24, 25 to 34, 35 to 44, 45, 64, and then 65 plus, as you say, it doesn't include the kids under 16. So thanks for that, Colter. Uh, are there any other questions? Look, uh, I'd just like to thank you, uh, Ruby and Colter for coming in and making an excellent presentation. I can't, can't help but reflect, um, that you guys represent your constituents more honestly than some other, uh, spokesmen for their constituents who tend to represent their own views, um, more strongly than, uh, the, the group's views, whereas you guys are making very clear, that A, the numbers of people you support, that you represent, and B, the, the diversity of opinion that is represented within that submission. So, uh, it's really valuable, um, your contribution here, so thank you for that. Um, I, I'm informed that there are no other submitters, uh, that have turned up for the session, so we can close the session. And I would ask Grant Edge, councillor Grant Edge, to do the final closing care here, please.
Thanks, thanks Ian. Um, I'll, I'll do Anu here, Anu here, Anu here, Anu here. Kiti Uru Tapanui O, uh, Tapanui Otanei. Kia Watia, Kia Mama, Kia Naka, Te Tina Nana, Ti Warua, Itiara, Takata. Koya. Ra'i Rongo. Pakai Ria, Ki Runga. Ya Tina, Tina.